Call our August meeting to order and welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. And we'll call the city clerk to call the rubber.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Willingham.
Present.
Councilman Hadley.
Here.
And Councilman Lawrence.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I will call on Councilman Hadley to offer our opening prayer and then ask for everyone to stand with a place of the flag and we'll get started. Councilman Hadley.
Dear Father, thank you for the kindness to come out today in your name. I would love to make the season that's better for the city of the middle of the Lord. Give us the strength, Father, to bless everyone, Lord. Just want to say thank you for the kindness to come out today. Thank you for the ring that we receive in your name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have received minutes from our last meeting in your packet of July 22 meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions or motion?
Motion, clerk.
Motion on second to approve the July 22, 2014 minutes. All in favor, raise your hand. And they are approved. Thank you. Okay, city manager, I believe we have a public hearing to take place.
So we actually had two public hearings. The first is on a request from Mr. Hugh Ivy for a condition of use of property located at 224 South Harley Street for the purpose of home occupation, operate his trophy business within that facility, within that, within that location. Does anyone here would like to speak in favor of this request?
Me.
Mr. Hugh Ivy.
What you got going on there, Ian?
Well, about one trophy, I mean, one plaque to build for the NWSA people, their leadership award, and I can't divulge who that is. I told him I wasn't gonna do it, but I mean, I'm gonna have to do it because he's a good big man. But I mean, it's, I'm about to get it organized and get straight now, I've got to put some stock in, you know, in the room and that sort of thing, but I'm, I'm starting to, to gain ground.
Okay, so it calls for a home occupation, conditional use, so as a home occupation, you are, you are living in this property.
I'm living there, yes.
Okay, all right. And we have some stipulations, I believe. Ben, you want to go over those with him?
Well, the, the outside of the home is to remain residential in nature, and you also understand that Mr. Ivy, that the signage can only be two square feet.
Two square feet.
Two by one.
Two by one.
And you mentioned in our work session that most of your business is by telephone.
By telephone, fax or email.
Yeah, so you should not significantly increase the traffic in and they could.
Very possibly not, no.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from council members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone here would like to speak in opposition to Mr. Ivy's request? The second public hearing is dealing with the charter amendment. And that, the text of the ordinance will be read later in the meeting, but the purpose of the charter amendment is to amend our current ordinance to increase the court cost fines and sittingness for court. This is primarily for contempt of court, which deals with persons who are given citations to come to court who choose not to do so. The current fine is $50 to proposed amendment will raise that to $100. Our municipal court judge has asked that we consider doing that. He had 40 no-shows or contems during the last session of municipal court. So there'll be a first reading tonight, a copy of the ordinance. It's available in the city manager's office, anyone would like to, to see the ordinance, and they'll also be in public, it'll just run in the Camilla enterprise prior to the, the council taking final action on this at the September 8 meeting, the public, the second public hearing, the second reading, and the actual adoption of the ordinance will occur at that point.
Okay.
And you would know what, nobody speak for or against that. I declare the public hearings closed for now.
Okay, thanks, sir. Reports from administrative committee.
Got three items tonight, Mr. Mayor. Number one, council discussed a request from Hugh Ivy for a condition of use of property located at 224 South Harley Street for the purpose of home occupation to operate his trophy business. Mrs. Betty Umprezone of the property has given Mr. Ivy a letter of permission to seek a conditional use. Plan of commission held a public hearing Monday, August 4, 2014, for consideration of this conditional use and have recommended the conditional use be granted. If Mr. Ivy moves from this location, the conditional use will be non-existent. Administrative committee recommends approval of the conditional use and authorizes the mayor to sign the ordinance as an informal motion.
Second.
Here we have a motion on a second to approve a conditional use for Hugh Ivy at 224 South Harley Street. Do we have any other questions or to be directed to city manager or to Mr. Ivy? Okay, all in favor then, raise your hand. No opposition, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item number two, city manager will discuss the first reading of the charter amendment fine increase for contempt of court.
Well, as I mentioned earlier during the public hearing, we do have, there will be actually two readings on this. A lot of times the council reads an ordinance and approves the count, the ordinance at the first reading and suspends the second reading, but in this case, it has to be read in both, both meetings. And I will jump in, I'll give you a break, and I'll read it. How about that?
Sounds good, man.
We got one that's about 10 pages long later. An ordinance adopted pursuant to the Municipal Home Rule Act of 1945, OCGA Section 36-35-1 X 6 X 8, ending Section 6-3 of Article 6 of the Charter of the City of Camilla, Georgia, so as to increase the amount of the fine which the municipal court judge is authorized to impose for contempt of court from $50 to $100, repealing all ordinances and charter provisions of conflict and for other purposes. Being ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla pursuant to the authority of the Municipal Home Rule Act of 1945, amended OCGA Section 36-5-1 X 6, and it's hereby ordained by authority of same Section 1, Section 6.2 of Article 6 of the Charter of the City of Camilla, sir, by amendment by increasing the amount of the fine which municipal court judge is authorized to impose as punishment for contempt of court from $50 to $100, so that after final adoption of this ordinance, municipal court judge will have the authority to impose, to impose fines for contempt of court in an amount not to exceed $100 for contempt, Section 2, all conflicting ordinances, charter provisions, and other provisions in conflict herewith are repealed.
Okay, that's our first reading for this ordinance, and we'll come back next month for our second reading.
On item three, council discussed two following GFA loans. Number one, loan number 93575WJ, that matures in 2016, at an interest rate of 4.8 percent, principal balance being $265,012.99. Payoff of this loan would save the city approximately $11,300. Number two, loan number 97L89WQ, that matures in 2018, at an interest rate of 5.28, principal balance being $337,922.68. Payoff of this loan would save the city approximately $45,000. Hope principal payoff would be $592,933.67. The city has $1,650,000 in the water and sewer available charge account that we contribute to each month. Administrative committee recommends approval to pay off the two loans in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on a second to pay off two GFA loans in the total amount of $592,933.67, thereby saving the city about $56,000. Now, we will continue to receive availability funds from equity, is that correct?
That's correct.
And which will replenish this water and sewer availability charge account.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just to kind of clarify for those people who are watching this, watching this on television, our sewer availability charge is similar to the sewer surcharge that we all get on our residential bills to help pay for the bond issues that we, or the loans that we've gotten to put in new water and sewer lines throughout the city. The availability charges are paid by primarily equity. We've been able to get some of the loans from GFA to do some, for the water sewer system out there that need to be done in order to be able to maximize their, the efficiency of the operation. And we will continue to collect the funds and, and replenish our water sewer availability charge. Just as an aside, the city has been trying to look at existing loans that have what are, what at the time were very good competitive interest rates, but now seem to be somewhat higher than we can get on the funds that we have available to invest. And these, these two loans, paying these loans off, the council approved the payoff of the McNeil Building bond issue recently, and the pre, we were able to prepay the ethanol pipeline loan that we had, and with those three actions, the city council was saving about $750,000 last year in interest.
Going forward.
Going forward. And those funds will be replenished by the, the agreements that we had in place to, to pay those.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor then of paying off these two GFA loans, raise your hand. No opposition, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Committee report.
We have three items from the Public Works Committee. Item number one, council discussed bids received for the city's solid waste collection services. A total of five requests for proposals were mailed out, and the city received three responses. The three bid proposals received were from Advanced Disposal Services, the City of Combsville, and Trans Waste Services. The city manager provided preliminary spreadsheets for the three proposals. City Manager Adams has recommended the city accept a bid from Advanced Disposal for the city's solid waste collection provider that best suits the needs of the city. The Public Works Committee recommends acceptance of the bid proposal from Advanced Disposal Services. This is in the form of a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve advanced disposable, advanced disposal for city's solid waste collection provider, complete the solid waste provider. Bennett, you want to bring us up a little bit on this?
Well, I think all the council members have looked at the bids that were received. They're all very competitive bids, and Advanced Disposal Service is the most competitive of the three. David Dent is here tonight from Advanced Disposal Services, just talked briefly about his, his business, his company, and what he's gonna bring to the city of Camilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity. Appreciate your review of the bids, and Mr. Adams, I appreciate your recommendation and your public works committee as well. To give you a brief history on our company, we were founded in 2000 by a few men that had worked in the waste industry with some big companies for quite a while, and they wanted to take out the bureaucratic corporate world that was in the trash world and be able to give customer service, and this company was founded in 2000. And just 14 years later, we are now the second largest waste industry in the United States of America, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Just to give you some brief history, most of you have probably reviewed our proposal, and so I'll not bore you with statistics, but we, Advanced Disposal does have 732 exclusive municipal contracts. So we come to the city of Camilla with a lot of experience, and we know how to make your streets clean, we know how to take care of you guys and your residents. We dispose of about 50,900 tons of garbage a day, couple the light into our personal landfills. We also service 203, oh, excuse me, 2.3 million residential customers every week. I say again, we have the experience to, to service your city and would be so delighted to do so. Something that sets us aside than a lot of other large companies, I'm scared of large companies personally, but I want you to note that our independence status, we are not a publicly traded company, we are independently owned, and due to that, the bureaucratic structure of these national corporate companies, we can make decisions quickly and we can implement these decisions and what we need to do very effectively for you and your residents. What I can bring to your community, first of all, we bring competitive pricing. My numbers have proven through the, excuse me, the spreadsheets that Mr. Adams gave us. I want to save you guys about $32,000 a year over a five-year term, that's about $380,000, and I'm sure, sure that you and your finance director can find somewhere to spend that money wisely. Second of all, customer service, we pride ourselves on what we give to you guys and the residents of your city. And I can assure you, our reputation speaks for itself through this. And speaking of relationships, we look forward to building relationships with council, mayor, administrators, and your residents as well. We come and be a part of your community. I'd like to note while I'm here on relationships that of our municipal contracts, we have a 91% retention rate. We renew 91% of our contracts. I'm very proud to be a part of that procedure, and I think it comes from customer service and building good working relationships as well as communication. And you guys will get that out of me and out of my company. We also support your community, civic groups, local chamber, Chamber of Commerce, newspapers, school, community projects, in-kind services. We do both in-kind and financial. Most cities, I end up getting three to four to $5,000 donated every year to different community events. We'd be pleased to do this for the city of Camilla as well. There's three things that you can expect from me. I will be your municipal marketing representative. Number one, I'm accountable. My reputation with the company speaks for itself, as well as our company. We're accountable, our reputation speaks there. We're accessible, I am accessible. Our equipment is state of the art. We use fuel and oils that are better for our, for cleaner environment and things of such sort. We'll always be accessible to you. I'll give you a brief example. Mitchell County needed some help just shortly, three days before July 4 holiday. Within 24 hours, I had three trucks in here from the city of Orona, that, that we work up there as well and have a large facility. I brought those trucks in and we cleaned this county up. Every container was done. I'm accessible. I, I can get my hands on equipment to help you in the case there's a natural disaster. And availability is the third thing you'll get from me. I'm available, my cellphone, my email, my home phone, my office phone, my staff, same way. We don't hide from you guys, we're gonna be your friend, we'll be here for you. Plan of action for the city of Camilla, just to let you know what we're gonna do. All new equipment, every resident, you awarded this, I guarantee you, everybody gets a brand-new cart, you got brand-new trucks on the street, brand-new front-load cans for all your commercial customers as well. We're gonna look clean, we're gonna start out right. These carts will be delivered by a third-party company. Sometimes we do them ourselves, but I can often get a better job done by people that focus on just delivering carts for a living. And with that, every cart will have a serial number on it, and I will get an address system from, that the city will provide to me. And when this company delivers this cart to a resident or to an address, that serial number will be assigned to it. And it's a lot easier to track these things. Communication, tracking, managing reports is very important to us. We will route this city with a system that we have that's state-of-the-art called Route Smart. We're gonna dump all the addresses that you give us, and this thing's a lot smarter than we are, and it tells us where we need to go and these sort of things, and what streets to turn on. We will also take your current routing into consideration, and we'll put the two of them together and come up with a good clean route to run. We will also educate the residents with cart hangers. We have colored cart hangers that will hang them, let them know when their carts are gonna be serviced on days and approximate times. We'll handle all of that, we'll run as in the newspaper, possibly on radio as well, whatever it might take. Days of service, I'm looking at four days. I think we run your city in three and a half days. Henceforth, I don't have to be trucks on your street five days a week. That prevents repair to your streets and maintenance, as well as accidents. We're gonna come here, we're gonna knock it out, we'll get it done, we'll run it with ASL trucks, much like you have now. And I think we can do it three and a half, three and a half days. And as far as the brown goods are concerned, we plan to run that on the other day of the week, and we'll come in and pick your, your brown goods up weekly as well. And so I think we have a good plan in place for the city of Camilla, and I'm looking forward to a great relationship here and friendship as well. Is anyone having any questions for me or concerns?
Explain to the public about brown goods.
Mm-hmm. You know, the RFP was a little vague on exactly what the city wanted to do with brown goods. I have some suggestions when we get to contract time as to what might work best for the city, but I'm definitely willing to work with you guys on whatever you're wanting to achieve with the brown goods.
Could you tell what brown goods are, some people might not know what?
White goods, your MSW, your municipal garbage is what you put inside your car.
Correct.
And then you have white goods, which are refrigerators and stoves and dishwashers and things, but brown good is the other, minus yardage. Brown good would be that sofa, or, you know, things, things like that, house, things that would come out of the household that are not white goods or MSW waste. And we'll probably run that with a rear loader, obviously. And my thought, Mr. Adams, it would be nice if we could do this on an own call. There's not a lot of brown goods.
We'll work something out where the customers can call a number that you have, where our customer service has put together a route for you, for you during the week.
We'll service that on one day.
So you come in, you can do that in one day.
That's right. We'll, we'll have one day set aside just for brown goods or extra items, and these people will call us in, you know, just, just say it's Thursday. They'll call us, buy closing business on Wednesday, then we'll get it all on Thursday for the week. And that's, that's easy to, to accomplish there.
Okay.
Any other concerns?
How many municipal do you all do in Georgia?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Yes, sir.
In this area, you do a number of them?
Oh, absolutely. In, in my territory alone, and I want to start north of here, the city of Perry, the city of Americas, the city of Cordial, all of Chris County, city of Sylvester, all of Worth County, we're just starting to sell city, Baker County, that's, I think that's probably one of the closest to you right now.
Anything else?
As I mentioned in the work session, I talked to the city managers in some of these towns that David had mentioned, and got very good recommendations.
Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you, council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
They know, I mean, if we, if we awarded this bid, seminar sanitation didn't leave us now.
I'm writing, I'm writing him a letter, I've written a letter, I've letting our attorney review it, and I'm writing him a letter, and after talking with Mr. Dent, I said September the first, he's gonna have trouble getting the new cans because of some orders ahead of him. As he said, he's dealing, this is national, so maybe October the first before we can make the transition. We've talked, if, if we have problems with our current provider, he's prepared to come in and, and step into the void and, and continue, pick up and, and start with used cans, with the idea that they would be replaced as used.
With new ones. What's that? That's right. We, we would have to, we'd have to come up with some sort of plan of action if they pulled out now. Number one, I would imagine that your attorney, I think Mr. Coleman is Norman, I would imagine they could issue some sort of injunction to make them perform more than likely. I've seen that happen before, but in the event that that could happen, we will do whatever it takes to make things happen till October.
As I said in my letter, they, our, you know, the, the reason that this contract is being terminated is because of breach of contract. They haven't revived the service. And that, we as a city can give them 20 days, but that's not adequate time for somebody to refocus their business when they're looking to count the south of Camilla. So we're, you know, we're, to give them to October the first is really doing, trying, I mean, we want this to be as seamless as possible to our residents and businesses, but it's also giving them an opportunity to, to, to do it, you know, to sit down and plan how they're gonna refocus their business.
Okay. Are you gonna let them come in and start spending?
I can't tell you what they're gonna do.
That's true.
But we're trying to anticipate all, all the different options that might.
Correct.
Present itself.
If they come in and start, they're not kidding, we got problems.
Anything you can add to that?
I'll just add briefly that we are in the process, and Mr. Coleman and I have briefly looked at the termination letter, and we're also looking over the contracts, and we'll be back in touch with you this weekend on, on that. We talked about it for a few minutes today, so there's a termination provision, and, you know, he's, he's gonna look it over and, and go, go through the proposed letter, and we'll get back in touch with the city on it.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of accepting the bid from Advanced Disposal for the city's solid, to become the city's solid waste collection provider, raise your hand. There is no opposition, that passes unanimously. Thank you, and David, we look forward to working with you soon.
Likewise, thank you, sir.
Item number two, council discussed lighting for Centennial Stadium. The cost of the lighting is $102,000 and can be installed on or before October 1, 2014. The Public Works Committee recommends approval for Centennial Stadium lighting project. This is in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on a second to approve a lighting project for the Centennial Stadium. Bennett, you want to bring us up to date on this?
Well, this, this project will change the way our stadium looks visually. We now have six poles and six sets of light, lights. They'll be taken down and four poles will be put up versus the six. We have probably 18 candle power lighting on the playing field. With the new lights, we'll have 50 candle power lighting, which will allow us to have any kind of playoff, whether it's GI, H, A, or GS. The private school or the, or the public high school can play on it with no problem. Mic of stress, the old poles are actually in pretty good shape, even though they're a bit rusty, and all the lights will be taken down and stored. Everything that's, that's there now can be reused at our baseball or soccer complex in the future. So we will have quite an inventory of lights that can be used to either one of those fields in addition to an upgraded lighting system at the football stadium.
Okay. Any, any questions, any comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the Centennial Stadium lighting project, raise your hand. No opposition, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item number three, city manager Adams and council discussed the 2015 LMIG program application. The city will be receiving $47,560.31 in LMIG funds from the Department of Transportation this year. Several projects were discussed for resurfacing. City manager, city manager Adams has recommended the city use the LMIG funds and SPOS funds for project number four. Stadium drive from South Harley Street to State Route 112, widen one foot on each side of the road if possible and resurface. North Harley Street from Broad Street to Peachtree Street, millware needed and resurface using the same method that was used on South Harley Street. The total distance is 1.13 miles, and the estimated cost for the project is $271,200. The Public Works Committee recommends approval for the project number four as described above. This is in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve project number four, paving project. City manager, you want to bring us up to date on this and what we can, we can expect?
Well, and, and again, for the, the citizens watching this on television, we, I presented several different projects to the city council, and I've said this in the work session when I presented them, there are probably some residential streets that we hope to do with the next round of paving that, that need to be resurfaced. I had four different projects, and it really came down to looking at the streets that had the greatest volume of traffic and the worst driving conditions. And Stadium Drive has some places that are, are gonna come apart on us if we don't do something pretty quick and something pretty quick. And North Hardy also has some spots that need to be taken care of. As Councilman Lawrence said, it's my hope that we can widen Stadium Drive a foot on each side. I think that'll make a tremendous difference to the motoring public, have that road widened. North Hardy from Broad up to Peachtree, we will mill that down like we did South Hardy. We'll go in and we'll put that fabric ladder that we put between the two, the base and the wearing surface to keep that longitudinal cracking from coming through as it often does in resurfacing projects. So I think these are the two streets that need to be resurfaced the worst, but I know there are other streets that we're not including in this list for the next year or two.
Well, we continue to work with SPOS funds as they come in and, that's what they're for. And we continue, we will continue to have a plan in place to surface as many streets as we can each year as it comes along. Any other questions for the city manager? Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving project number four, paving project number four, which is Stadium Drive from South Hardy to State Route 112, and North Hardy Street from Broad Street to Peachtree Street, raise your hand. Okay, no opposition, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you. City Attorney, do you have a report for us other than what we've seen before?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but no, we don't have a report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Just a couple of things. One is, first is the Easter Seale House or proposed office on Oakland. We received a letter recently from Beth English, who is the executive director of the Easter Seals Group. They're still trying to put that project together, it's been sitting there for some time. They're going to give it another year, and they're pursuing some new funding opportunities, and hopefully that'll work out. But I know I've had people over time ask me about that house, and this is really the first direct communication we've had from the Easter Seals Group, and I wanted to pass that along to the citizens. Got a new fountain in the Coda Morel Park. We're also in the process of getting some new benches, the ones that are there now, if you sit on those benches, that we found a wet one. So we need something that's a little further back. I've met last week with some representatives from Department of Transportation, anticipate getting approval to erect our Camilla welcomes you signs. I don't know if you can see, Jerry. This is a sign that's actually six feet wide and about three feet high. There's one, this sign has been erected up at the triangle at the intersection of North Hardy and North Scott with some landscaping in front of it and some lighting. And I hope that we can do that at several locations around town, out here at 37 West, coming where Broad and Oakland come together, coming into town, a sign there. One coming north on 112 in the intersection of 112 and 97 down where the hot long trail marker is. And then two locations on US 19, one south where MacArthur crosses US 19 down where GFA's, oh, GFA's office was. And then north of town where the Craig Bird will start in the median, we'll be erecting one there too if we get approval. I'm expecting a letter from them any time. Our work is continuing to progress in Morningside subdivision, installing new sewer lines. I appreciate the patience of the residents in the Morningside subdivision. We are, when we finish, we're going to have something really nice out there, but it's been with the water project and now sewer project, we've had a bit of disruption, and I appreciate the citizens working with us. We're about to start our budget process for the 2014-2015 budget. The first public hearing and budget work session will be Tuesday, August 19. The second public hearing will be Tuesday, September 2nd, both of these at 6:30. A third public hearing and adoption of the budget will be on September 16, and that's also, that will also be a call meeting prior to the regularly scheduled work session. There is also a call meeting on August 20th, the set of 2014 millage rate. That meeting will be at 10:00 a.m. The rate will remain at 2.4, I'm sorry, 7.245 mils. This is a rate that's been in effect since 2009. We had a, our notice, a five-year history, notice of the hearing is in last week's paper. It's kind of small, but it's there. August 14th, Channel 71, the SEC Network will begin being broadcast by CNS, that's going to be on, that's Super Basic Channel 71. And the SEC Network will have over 1,000 live events, including football, men and women's basketball, baseball, softball, and other activities. I've had a lot of people ask about that, and we at CNS are proud to be able to bring that to our subscribers. If you're not subscribed on CNS, you need to call customer service and get signed up. I hope to hear this week about our 2014 community development block grant project that's hopefully will be funded by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and upgrade our sewer system in the Martin Luther King, Beacon Street, Meyer Street, Fry Place, Walker Street area. We haven't heard anything yet, but I'm cautiously optimistic. We have an excellent project. We'll see if they make a good decision up there. That's all I got.
Okay. One thing before we go, your city council participates just about 100% in going to Mayor's Day in Atlanta in January and to the GMA convention in Savannah in June. And a large part of that is, well, a lot of it is networking, but a large part is education. We take classes, trying to become better council people and mayors. Two folks I want to recognize tonight have received, achieved a milestone, and I want to read the press release from the GMA Association. Camilla council members Vivian Smith and Andy Doris Willingham received a prestigious certificate of excellence from the Georgia Municipal Training Institute at the Georgia Municipal Association's 81st Annual Convention in Savannah on June 23rd, 2014. The GMA Institute, a cooperative effort of GMA and the University of Georgia's Carl Vincent Institute of Government, provides a nationally recognized series of training opportunities for elected officials, to elected city officials. To receive a certificate of excellence, a city official must complete a minimum of 120 units of credit, including nine courses from the required list and the Robert E. Knox Junior Municipal Leadership Institute. The training program consists of a series of more than 40 courses. This is an outstanding achievement, said GMA Executive Director Lamar Norton. We commend council member Smith and Willingham for this accomplishment and for the dedication they have shown in using this valuable resource to become more effective city officials. Based in Atlanta, GMA is a voluntary non-profit organization that provides legislative advocacy, research, training, employee benefit, and technical consulting services to its 520-member There were 12 folks that were awarded this certificate of excellence from around the state, and we had two of them from Camilla. As shows their dedication to becoming better council people, their dedication to education, and their dedication to the service of the City of Camilla. And I commend them highly for their achievement. And at this time, I would like to allow them to stand and be, and to show off their certificate and have a photo op for them at this time. But I congratulate Andy Doris Willingham and Vivian Smith for their accomplishment in receiving this certificate of excellence, and want to congratulate them. So I would like to give, allow the press to tell us where you want them to stand so you can get some pictures for our local paper and, okay? Right over here, all right? We have a chance twice a year to take courses, and there are other courses that are held around the state from time to time. And as I understand, the GMA has taken into consideration some of the things that city councils and individuals have talked about through the last year or so of some grassroots studies. They're going to go to local areas around the state to have some of these classes this coming fall and then the spring. And I believe it's going to be determined that it's going to be in Camilla. One of the courses is going to be held in Camilla. And of course, receiving a certificate of excellence, you don't have too many more courses to take, but there will be an opportunity, and there's a list that they're going to be holding around the state, they're going to be turning into three-hour courses, so it won't be a long stay. These courses have been being six-hour courses, but they're being reformatted into three-hour courses. We've got, we have gotten, and I'm sure you probably have gotten an email from GMA about this, and so it might be something that we can take advantage of here in the fall and in the next spring to add some of our, add to some of our training opportunities. So we won't have to go to Atlanta and Savannah for all of them. They will come to us for some of these courses, so we look forward to that. And, but I do want to congratulate you two ladies for an outstanding job in getting educated about how to, how we run our cities. So congratulations again.
B, you know, you said they might not need to go to take any more advanced courses, but maybe they need to teach some of the courses.
That's true.
We only have one more step, we have three, four steps.
Four steps?
Three.
One more, okay, very good. Do we have any other items to be brought before the council this time? Any comments from the council, any comments from the citizens? There you go, I hear a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, raise your hand, and we are adjourned. Thank you.